I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could we have roll call?
Jim Collier.
Here.
Craig Gershaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Here.
Wiley Sear.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our October 1st meeting. If you've had a chance to review those, I'll look for either a to amend or approve.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second for approval of our minutes from October 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The first thing I'm going to do is I'm gonna call on Louise back there. Phyllis said that you had something you'd like to share and show us and rather than make you wait all night long, we got like a hundred ordinances to do tonight, so don't laugh, folks.
I'm not too sure where I stand.
You come, you sit right here and that way we record our meetings and there's a microphone there, it'll pick you up and it doesn't help the people back there hear any better, but it helps, it'll be on our video. Okay.
Gentlemen and ladies, tonight I'm here to bring something to you folks and ask your permission in order for us to put, it'll be Christmas time before too long, so I have some banners that we'd like to put up. These are not original ones and Charlie Green was making them. They would be front and back down the street for the holiday, Christmas. I have three or four.
Different designs.
There will be different ones. We would have all the things, which I think would add to our streets here and bring it more festive to the city of Decatur.
Absolutely.
So I'm asking your permission to do so.
I think that's kind of a no-brainer. We appreciate you coming forward and making the request. I know we changed the banners on the light poles from time to time with seasons and different things and.
Hold up your banner, we want it to be in the paper.
I'll make a motion to approve Louise Ray's request.
I'll gladly second. I don't think you're gonna have any objection up here, Louise.
Okay, well, I thank each and every one of you.
We gotta vote first.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't get a vote, but I said aye.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, not only for this, but your many years of involvement in the tree lighting and just wanting to make Decatur a better place. Absolutely. Very much appreciated. Thank you much, Louise.
Thank you so much.
You want this picture back, Louise? This other one?
Your other.
Yep, there you go. This evening, I believe we have a third reading on two different ordinances and then somebody has six more ordinances to introduce tonight. Hmm. So, so rather than going through all the ordinances first and making all these citizens that are here wait on all the exciting ordinance reading, I think that we should move right along to another thing that I have down here on my agenda and I'm gonna turn it over, well, before I turn it over to Tim. Sharon's here with us tonight and Sharon, I don't know if you, did you see the guy in the back of the room back there?
Yes.
He's here to cheer you on. He wanted to hear your speech. Sharon has been with us for how many years, Sharon?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight years.
Wow.
Yeah, I think she's the longest-tenured employee in the city, I would have to think.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we're, she's finally gonna leave us and retire. The last day is when?
October 31st.
October 31st and the only thing I'm gonna make you say is tell us who all's with you here tonight.
Um, my son wants to speak out, my daughter herself, my grandson Ben, Grayson Chloe, Danny, and my friend Mark.
And with that, I am, with that, I am now gonna turn it over to Tim, who may have a little something he wants to read on your behalf.
Um, I'd entertain a motion to introduce Resolution 2019-8 to be read in its entirety.
Second. I have a motion and a second for reading of Resolution 2019-8, not by short title, but in its entirety. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Resolution 2019-8, short title, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which recognizes Sharon Brown for her years of dedication and service to the city and its citizens. Whereas Sharon Brown started her career with the City of Decatur on September 28th, 1981, as an assistant to the Decatur Housing Authority Director, and whereas Sharon also assisted with the Building and Planning Department and soon became a residential inspector after acquiring licensing as a residential building inspector and as a residential plumbing inspector. And whereas as a result of Sharon's dedication, work ethic, and understanding of state and local code requirements, Sharon was assigned increasing responsibility over the years within the Building and Planning Department to the point that she currently serves as the Assistant Building and Planning Department Superintendent. And whereas Sharon has also served as a mayoral assistant during the administrations of Harold Miller, Fred Ish, John Schultz, and Ken Meyer, and was frequently called upon to draft proclamations or declarations on behalf of the city, and whereas Sharon played a critical role in initiating and assisting in the city's flood buyout program, which to date has resulted in the acquisition of 75 homes within flood-prone areas. And whereas throughout her career, Sharon also served as the Recording Secretary for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Plane Commission, attending countless meetings, preparing minutes, and overseeing the administrative duties of both regulatory bodies. And whereas Sharon's humble nature, her genuine kindness, her patience, and her wealth of knowledge caused her to be an effective and respected city official and caused her to be held in high esteem by so many over the years, whether by coworkers or by members of the general public. And whereas Sharon has announced her retirement at the end of October 2019, and whereas the Common Council wishes to recognize Sharon for her dedication and service and wishes to publicly thank Sharon for her distinguished career, now therefore, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana follows. Resolve: The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby finds that during her years of public service, Sharon Brown has served the City of Decatur with professionalism and with distinction. Resolve: The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby finds that Sharon Brown ably served multiple administrations and the Building and Planning Department Superintendents and was invaluable to them in helping assure the safety of the public and orderly development of the city. Resolve: The Common Council hereby acknowledges that Sharon's presence will be deeply missed, but that her kindness, her good humor, her love of her family, and her care for those with whom she worked and for those she served will always be remembered. Resolve: The members of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby express their deepest gratitude to Sharon Brown for her service to the city and its citizens and wish Sharon the very best in whatever future may hold. Resolve: The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby spreads this resolution among the records of Common Council and directs that a copy be delivered to Sharon Brown in appreciation and recognition of her outstanding public service. Duly passed, adopted, and resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana on this 15th day of October 2019. Signatures for the council members, the mayor, and attested by Phyllis's clerk treasurer.
I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask you. So, you worked for Kirk, right? Who'd you work for before Kirk? Who'd you work for?
2019-8.
Who'd you work for before Matt Dyer?
Wendy gave us.
Four different building supervisors.
It's like seven, right?
Four people. More history, more.
We'll have one, we use seven sometimes.
Before you leave, I had to send Phyllis a back to get you a little present on behalf of the city council and the city of Decatur. I'm presenting to you a few.
You need to vote on it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to work for this city and you representing the other state that we agreed on. Thank you so much.
Yep, you did well. Thank you, Sharon.
Absolutely. You make a motion. I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2019-8.
Second. I have a motion for passage of Resolution 2019-8. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're gonna pass this around for everyone to sign and then you have a nice copy of it. All those proclamations that you have written over the year, now you're gonna get your own. None of this is a resolution, not a proclamation.
Mine was.
I know in the last three and a half years, I would tell Sharon I need a proclamation for something declaring this such and such week and I was like, I don't know what, I don't know what to tell her to put in. And she, I don't know where she'd come up with her creativity, but she'd come back with, like Tim did on this one here, it's just very well said. She does her homework and figures things out, how to word them and she, yeah. So you'll be on call for my.
Speed dial.
Speed dial, huh? All right. If you wanna come up here, we'll give you this and your family doesn't have to hang around for all Tim's ordinances. Unless you want, you're welcome.
It's kinda on black and gold, too, I just.
The paper, parchment paper. Got that original down here in there. So, uh, the last, your last day that you will be on the job is the 31st of October, so everyone remember that, be sure to come by and.
over to the right, yeah.
Trick or treat.
Okay, uh, got that matter out of the way.
Trick or treat with her, yeah. One last time.
Trick or treat for you, Sharon.
Thanks again.
One other thing here, let's just go on to the ordinances. We have a third reading of ordinance 2019-14, that's the budget appropriations and tax rates for the year 2020. We did first two readings, tabled it at the last meeting and if someone would like to introduce it on its third reading.
We'll make a motion then to place ordinance 2019-14 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second for placing ordinance 2019-14 on its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance for appropriate, uh, ordinance number 2019-14, ordinance for appropriation and tax rates.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-14 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 2019-14 on its third and final reading. We have roll call, vote please.
Jim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yes, thank you. Ordinance 2019-14 has been adopted. And the next ordinance then would be the third reading of ordinance 2019-15, which is a capital improvement plan for a ceded fund for the years 2020 and 2021. That's ordinance 2019-15.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-15 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2019-15 on its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2019-15 starts out on capital improvement plan for the City of Decatur for calendar years 2020 and 2021. That's ordinance 2019-15.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-15 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2019-15 on its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2019-15 starts out on capital improvement plan for the City of Decatur for calendar years 2020 and 2021.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-15 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-15 on its third reading. We have roll call, Phil, Phyllis?
Jim Collier.
Yep.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yeah.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yeah. Ordinance 2019-15 has been adopted. Thank you. Um, Tim? You have six ordinances.
Yes. Uh, three that Jeremy requested, three that the Building and Planning Department requested. Uh, the three that Jeremy requested, the first is regarding movement of the police parking on Second Street over to Third Street and opening up two hour parking on the west side of Second Street between Madison and Court. So this, that's the first, uh, of the three from Jeremy and it's ordinance number 2019-16, so I would entertain a motion to introduce it for first reading.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2019-16 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance number 2019-16 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-16, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 78 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented to establish a police parking only parking zone on Third Street between Court Street and Madison Street, which establishes limited parking on the west side of Second Street between Madison Street and Court Street.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-18 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-16 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
We have roll call, vote, thank you.
Jim Collier.
Yep.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yeah.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance 2018-16 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-16 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-16, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 78 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented to establish a police parking only parking zone on Third Street between Court Street and Madison Street, which establishes limited parking on the west side of Second Street between Madison Street and Court Street.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-16 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-16 on its second reading. We have roll call, vote.
Jim Collier.
Yep.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yes. Before we go to the third, are you gonna do a third?
I would suspend the rules and do this on a third reading tonight.
Before we do that, I'm gonna clarify that while it says it's from Court Street to Madison Street, it really is only marked, no parking, or I think it's police parking only or something like that, from Court Street up to roughly the sidewalk that runs east and west up to the backside of the courthouse. It really doesn't go all the way to Madison Street, the way Jeremy has it marked, but the ordinance, if we need to increase it later, we could, but that's the way the ordinance reads. Thank you. Wiley?
I'll make a miss, um, a motion to suspend the rules and to place ordinance 2019-16 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-16 on its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-16, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 78 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented to establish a police parking only parking zone on Third Street between Court Street and Madison Street, which establishes limited parking on the west side of Second Street between Madison Street and Court Street.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-16 on its third reading.
Second. Motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-16. We have roll call, vote.
Jim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yes. Ordinance 2019-16 has been adopted. Thank you. I'll give you that five more times.
The next ordinance is Jeremy had a speed zone study conducted out on 28th Street at the intersection of Monroe, West Monroe Street and 28th, and then going out towards the city limits to the west. Uh, that report came back and the recommendation was to reduce the speed to 35 miles per hour in that area. Uh, he's requesting an ordinance to that effect, so I would.
Do we know what it was before?
It's 45 now and they're reducing it to 35.
Okay. Yeah, Jeremy did a, a study with the NERC out of Fort Wayne and they did a traffic count and, um, I mean, they studied it from sunup to sundown, eastbound, westbound, northbound traffic and determined that we didn't really need to put a light there or anything, but that we should reduce the speed limit and then also, I think Jeremy addressed it at the last board of works meeting, that we're putting some, um, help me out. Thank you.
Light first stoplights.
Solar power.
Power.
Lights.
LED lights.
LED on the signs. With that, I look for a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-17.
Okay, we'll make a motion to place ordinance 2019-17 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Okay, we got a motion to place ordinance 2019-17 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance 2019-17, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 77, Schedule 8 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented, for the purpose of establishing a maximum speed on a portion of Monroe Street from the intersection with 28th Street to the westernly city limits.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-17 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance number 2019-17 on its first reading. We have roll call, vote, please.
Jim Collier.
Yep.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yeah.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2019-17 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-17 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-17, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 77, Schedule 8 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented, for the purpose of establishing a maximum speed on a portion of Monroe Street from the intersection with 28th Street to the westernly city limits.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-17 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-17 on its second reading. We have roll call, vote, Phyllis?
Jim Collier.
Yep.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yes. Make a motion to table ordinance 2019-17 for its third reading at the next city council meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2019-17 for its third reading at our next scheduled meeting, which will be determined after this vote. Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's two. Four to go.
Phyllis. All right, the third one that Jeremy requested was for the alley that comes off Monroe Street into the city parking lot on the east side of City Hall. Currently, it's marked as a one-way alley going south, but we don't have that established, so we need to do so. And again, this is one that I would recommend that you do on all three readings tonight. So this is ordinance 2019-18.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2019-18 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-18 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-18, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Schedule 5 of Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented, by establishing one-way travel on a portion of an alley located within the city block bordered by Monroe Street, First Street, Madison Street, and Second Street.
Okay, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-18 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-18 on its first reading. We have roll call, vote.
Jim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2019-18 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second for, to place ordinance 2019-18 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two, ordinance number 2019-18, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Schedule 5 of Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented, by establishing one-way travel on a portion of an alley located within the city block bordered by Monroe Street, First Street, Madison Street, and Second Street.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-18 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-18 on its second reading. We have roll call, vote.
Jim Collier.
Yep.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yeah.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and, and make a motion, or, and to place ordinance 2019-18 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-18 on its third reading by short title only, suspending the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-18, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Schedule 5 of Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented, by establishing one-way travel on a portion of an alley located within the city block bordered by Monroe Street, First Street, Madison Street, and Second Street.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-18 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-18 on its third reading. We have roll call, vote, please.
Jim Collier.
Yep.
Craig Gershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yes. Ordinance 2019-18 has been adopted. Thank you.
What's that? Go south. Monroe Street, John F. Monroe Street.
It always has. But it's never been...
Never been by law.
It's not really changing what's happened. It's just making it legal.
Yeah. Okay, the next ordinance, next three ordinances are basically at the request of the building and planning department. Kurt, Sharon, Aaron have been working on updating the building code standards. There's also a change with regard to commercial building permit fees. And then there's a third change with regard to mobile home park requirements. So I have three ordinances. The first is with regard to basically amending in its entirety, chapter one fifty-one of the code, and this deals with building code standards. So I'd entertain a motion to introduce ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance twenty nineteen dash nineteen on its first reading by short title only.
Okay.
Is this changing the code, Kurt, or just amending it?
We're updating it.
To the current one, or?
We've added some stuff to it.
There are general, what was added, or?
Uh, to the building code, we changed some verbiage. Uh, we added shipping containers as far as what they have to do. They want shipping containers on outbuildings. Pretty much kind of put siding off and pitch through and that where a bunch of buildings.
Good. There was conflict of interest language added.
We added definition for junk. Very detailed definition of junk. Scrap copper, glass, lead, uh, first metal, iron, steel, scrap. Oh, we also added conflict of interest. Basically, if I own property and mail and I own books, I can't start it. I can't issue a loan. I don't want to do that.
And that's, that's a statutory requirement that went into effect July first, so you have to do it. Any other questions, Tyler? Where were we? Although you were making the motion to pass?
We...
Introduce.
Introduce by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash nineteen on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Tim?
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen, short title, an ordinance of the county council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapter one fifty-one of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand and fifteen as supplemented in its entirety regarding building code standards.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash nineteen on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen on its first reading. Whatever we'll call vote, please.
Jim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullen.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance twenty nineteen dash nineteen on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen on its second reading, short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen, short title, an ordinance of the county council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapter one fifty-one of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand and fifteen as supplemented in its entirety regarding building code standards.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty nineteen, um, dash nineteen on its second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen on its second reading. Whatever we'll call vote.
Jim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullen.
Yes.
Make a motion to table ordinance twenty nineteen dash nineteen for its third reading at the next city council meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second for tabling ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen on its second reading, or for its third reading at our next scheduled meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And next to... Okay, and if anybody's interested and wants to look at the revisions, Kurt can certainly email you a copy of that, so you can review it before the next meeting if you wish. The next ordinance would be ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty. This deals with a modification of commercial building permit fees. Kurt, you can explain this, but I believe it's just a reduction in what the fee would be on certain types of structures after the first thousand dollars. It drops it from seven dollars to three.
While we were running to a while back with some of the projects and found some permit fees based on the fees we were charged and were going to be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars this particular time. So at that point, we got to state where the council found out we could put a cap for timing, which was twenty-five thousand. And then we went back through and started crunching the numbers. Basically, we brought it back down to our residential, our residential price of one of the things that we're set.
This would be ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty.
Okay, we'll make a motion to place ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty, short title, an ordinance of the county council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends section one fifty point three five seven A of chapter one fifty of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand and fifteen as supplemented regarding commercial building permit fees.
Make a motion to play, to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty on its first reading. Whatever we'll call vote.
Jim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullen.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty, short title, an ordinance of the county council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends section one fifty point three five seven A of chapter one fifty of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand and fifteen as supplemented regarding commercial building permit fees.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty on its second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty on its second reading. Whatever we'll call vote, please.
Craig, sorry, Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullen.
Yes.
Make a motion to table ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty for its third reading at the next city council meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second to table ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty at our next regularly scheduled meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And one last one, Tim? Yep. This one is for the modification of mobile home park requirements. Currently, we have two sections in our code that provided requirements for mobile home parks. What Kurt has done is basically consolidated, eliminated one of the sections and consolidated everything in a second and restated it. So Kurt, I don't know if you want to go, if there were any modifications in addition?
No, we just, we combined the two together and added a few things as far as what it did with the management and the, of course, things missing. Sharon got online and we started looking at them and I think we included in there that for the mobile home parks, the infrastructure has to be approved by the state when we have, so we had them already and what we may want to...
It's partly in response after some of the experiences we had in the last few years. It was apparent that we needed to make some modifications to this. Kurt's worked on doing that. So I'd entertain a motion to introduce ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one.
Okay, I'll make a motion and to place ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-one on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim?
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one, short title, an ordinance of the county council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which deletes section one fifty point two six three J and which amends section one fifty point two six four of chapter one fifty of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand and fifteen as supplemented regarding mobile home park requirements.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty on its first reading.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yes, it is.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place or to pass ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one on its first reading by short title. All would have a roll call vote. We're getting tired.
Jim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullen.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-one on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one, short title, an ordinance of the county council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which deletes section one fifty point two six three J and which amends section one fifty point two six four of chapter one fifty of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand and fifteen as supplemented regarding mobile home parks requirements.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-one on its second reading.
Second. Motion and a second for passage of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one on its second reading. Whatever we'll call vote.
Jim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullen.
Yes.
Make a motion to table ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-one for its third reading at the next scheduled city council meeting.
Second. Motion and a second to table ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one until our next scheduled meeting for adoption at that time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's a lot of ordinances.
Well done.
That's a lot of ordinances.
You got required.
The only other thing I have on my agenda is to discuss the date of our next meeting, which is, should be, the first Tuesday in November, which is the fifth. I know Tyler and I both have things going on that evening and Monday, and would like to know if we could move it to Monday, the fourth. I would, that's what I would suggest.
Fourth of November.
I'll make a motion then that we move our next scheduled meeting to November fourth at seven thirty.
Yeah, and Board of Works same night at six P.M.
Six P.M.
Yeah.
Board of Works.
I'll second. Motion and a second to move the next scheduled Board of Works and city council meeting to six P.M. and seven thirty P.M. on November fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's all I had. Chris Beck, you got anything from the P.D.?
Yes, sir.
Les?
I have just a couple things. Our open house was a huge success. It was a great weather night. I think it's the first time in three years in fact that we've been able to use air on the ground, so that was a good day. We will have fire department chili again at Twenty-Eighth parade night, so we're looking for some good chili. We'll be cooking again. Just reminders, everybody gets around fall cleanup. Reminder for city residents, burning is confined to a recreational ring and it has to be clean wood only for recreational purposes in city limits. We are experiencing some pretty dry conditions, not quite severe in southeast and southwest Indiana, but we hope possibly get some relief from that tonight. But this fall cleanup, be careful, you know, the open burning in the county is really intended as for land clearing and tree and yard brush removal. It's not to burn drag piles or piles of tires and that kind of stuff, so not really consider any kind of burn damage as of yet, but your conditions are pretty dry, so be careful when you're in. Lot of farm machinery, rastly out on the roads and the funnels are scrambling to try and get crops in, so slow down a little on the county roads, be courteous. Getting behind combines for a mile is like getting caught up to traffic lights on Thirteenth Street, so it's not a big deal. Just slow down and be courteous with farmers. They're trying to play catch-up on that, so just kind of some reminders of fall and things that are going on and...
Thank you. Kurt?
You know, Board of Works and Councilors are moving to that Monday. We still have more for P V A meetings last Tuesday night.
Four thirty?
Four thirty.
Correct. Okay. Kevin?
Water main on Highway Three, then I think the last meeting. They're still working at the time of the Board of Works meeting, trying to get everybody tied over. They're supposed to get them tonight. Not sure if they got there or not, so hopefully they are out of there by the end of the week or later sometime tomorrow.
With everything cleaned up and everything?
New.
New.
Everybody tied in.
Tied in.
And they know... I have a water plant going good, sealed all up. A lot of tanks are in, buildings are in. If I come along and they're, they're going pretty fast for that.
Good deal.
Yeah, and I noticed, I know a few council members about to go out to the plant. I went to their, they come back in and they give you a tour or whatever. None of that was just working on the foot stuff yet.
Terry?
Roger, you got anything tonight? I do. Hard job here.
Had to ask.
Really? I know you've had that.
Bill?
Nope.
Matt?
We started these leaves today. We ended with...
Grass.
...last year.
Okay, yard waste ended last week.
Anybody has yard waste hobbled out to the... We can haul it back or it's, it's grass in the...
Okay, good enough. So you started leaves this week.
They're just in one truck.
They're not, the leaves are coming off slow, aren't they, right now?
They're starting picking up.
They're all coming at once. All right, good to know. Melissa? Nothing. Council members have anything tonight?
Street resurfacing coming along really well.
Amen.
Good across the city, so thank you all for the work you've done to make that happen.
Thanks to the residents for being patient through all of this. But it is very nice getting it done. Tim, did you have anything else tonight? Just one thing. Couple ordinances, maybe? No. Earlier today, we had a pre-pricing call with Hilliard, Lyons, and Crow, our underwriter, regarding the sewer bond refunding. The bonds were priced today. If you recall back in July, it was projected that there would be a net savings of about three hundred twelve thousand. This morning during our call, there was a projection that we would have an increase in net savings of around three hundred fifty-nine thousand. And as a result of the pricing, we actually are going to have a net savings of three hundred eighty-three thousand. So it was definitely worth doing, and closing will occur on November fifth originally. We thought it was going to be October thirty-first, but in talking with S R F, they advised Crow that they needed to have the closing done on November fifth, so that's the closing date. And there'll be some document...
They'll want to...
I know. But there will be documentation that will be passed around, approved, and signed in anticipation of that closing, and it will be basically a dry closing at that point.
I have two questions to comment. First question, Southeast School, we talked about last time.
Yes.
Was there?
I can answer that.
Question of?
Trying to get an extension?
Well, the other one is if we took possession of it, do we have the right ability to turn around and give it away?
Well, the short answer to that is that the letter that they sent us was looking at it a little closer. Our time was up. And they have sent to the state that it's now being offered to a, you know, there's a charter school that wants it. That only will be on the table for a couple of months, and then after that, it can come back and we can go at it again. Since then, I have had some more interest from some, I don't think they want me to say, area people that might possibly be interested. So I went to Superintendent Lehman the day after our last meeting, and that was what I was told right off the get-go that, sorry, but we've already sent to the state. But he's relatively certain that no charter school is going to want it. We already have, I'm not sure how many.
So they don't have to hold on to it for years?
No. It used to be four years, and they reduced it to two years, and now it's just a matter of a couple of months. So, yeah.
So another question would be, is that our second grade wall?
Yeah, that's a question I would like to know.
We just paid for the footers and half of the brick.
Matt, could you follow up on that tomorrow? Give Brent Arnold a call? Let me know, and I can.
Footers are poured.
Yeah.
I think they need a certain amount of time after they pour the footers before they can put the block, dirt on them.
Been a couple of weeks.
Well, I think that's true, but I think there is probably that time.
Okay.
I don't know.
Had me all fired up when they delivered the brick, you know, so.
Then they delivered porta-pot.
Yeah.
But.
They were paying rent on that. They should have.
It's been there a week, over a week, but. And I guess the only thing, other thing, just for council, is like, kept down on me